With the new police reform in Massachusetts, all police officers have to be certified by post, which is the piece officer standards and training now, which, and what that includes is part-time officers now have to go to.
Full-time academy.
Of, of.
So that's in effect now? When did that actually take effect? I thought that was next year.
No, so it took effect as of July, uh, July first of this year. Um, so what that means is, is that every part-time officer is gonna now be eligible to work full-time somewhere. So the state, it's a double-edged sword. The professionalism of part-time officers is much higher, but the flip side to that is now they're, now they're eligible for full-time employment anywhere as a police officer. So if I can bring.
Assuming they go get the full-time training, which is gonna.
Well, they don't get the full-time training, they're gonna be decertified.
Which is gonna reduce probably largely amount of the officers available for this, I'm afraid.
So I would, my goal is to get ahead of this so that I don't run into burning my current officers out, having them work alone. I mean, policing has changed markedly since two thousand nine when we were fully staffed.
Right.
And now it's become even more challenging. Now, the, the other benefit to having the tenth full-time guy is that would allow me to put the SRO in the school Monday through Friday. And you'd be amazed at what goes on at my school nowadays.
No, I wouldn't.
(laughing).
Um. The tough thing with the budget is, of course, we make the budget, it's good for a year, and we don't have, I think, where was it? We were probably at a DPW meeting when someone said, "Well, the town always just has this money lying around for something." I said, "I'd love to know where." We just finished a budget, and there was none. We don't have excess funds, and we can't authorize at this point excess spending without having some way that we know we're coming up with it. Um, we do plan to have a special town meeting, hopefully, within, within probably two months, I would think. We haven't started scheduling, we have to, and we could address it then.
Well, the concern, concern that I have, to be perfectly honest, is to say that we knew we were driving this budget into, okay, a situation that would leave us where we're sitting right now, that there we wouldn't have sufficient funds to fully staff because we're paying for a staff member who no longer will be employed with us.
So the, I understand we're down one without the chief, but we've been down one already for a while, or?
Since two thousand nine. So fully staffed, we have ten officers. That's four officers on the day shift line, three on eves, three on mids. And what that does is that allows double coverage all the time to officers. I personally don't, one, it's bad for our officers don't wanna work alone. And I think it's too, it's dangerous.
It's dangerous, right. I don't like, I don't like that. Um.
And I think that having a, a school resource officer in the school every day is critical, especially nowadays.
If, if you were going to have to wait until the special town meeting and could only hire one at this point, where would, would you put the SRO in the, in the buildings, or would you?
So the SRO would have to go to kind of an offset five or two, so he would be, his off days would be like Tuesday, Wednesday, because I would need him to cover day shift all the time.
I mean, I'd feel very comfortable approving one for now and, and hopefully doing the second at, at special. Cause that's, that brings us up to what was our quote "full staffing" and, um, we've, you know, we've gotta get back to double coverage full-time, and, and we can address that at special town. I don't think we might have a problem with that.
I mean, I, I do plan on building it into next year's budget. Obviously, that doesn't help us this year. Right now, if their start date was to be, would be January first, you know, I'd need almost twenty-one thousand dollars, twenty thousand nine sixty-six forty.
Well, and the other thing to maybe think about.
For the, for the one?
For the additional officer.
We've, for?
For the tenth officer.
For the, because we already budgeted for the nine officers.
So we're already budgeted for me to hire one right now.
Okay.
But to put the tenth officer on would be an additional twenty thousand nine sixty-six forty.
Twenty, that's it?
For half, for six months, yeah.
For six months.
I mean, we're damned if we do and damned if we don't with this one.
Well, no, it's, it's certainly not bad. Um, special town, we should be able to, if we had to pull, I, I don't like to, we should have free cash somewhere, I hope. I don't like to pull on stabilization of this, I have to, I wanna keep adding to it. Um, but if we had to, had to, we, we can get the funds and do that. We have, the way timing went of money, we're gonna have some stabilization money, um, free cash money coming. Um.
Well, the fact that we're, you know, so far behind certifying free cash is one of our problems, but.
Right.
For, to, to me, um, we, we created some of this problem, and not that it wasn't the right thing to do, but my concern is, is, is twenty-one thousand dollars, and obviously, we know we have that in free cash. We know we have that. Um, and so I would like to just, let's see what's out there. Cause by the time you, you search and look and stuff, you know, we, we may be into April before you have the person you think you want.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It's not easy.
I don't have anybody lined up right now.
I mean, uh.
So I'd have to post a position.
I mean, I, I'm just hesitant to, I'm confident the town will support this and do it, but until they do, it's not our money to spend. Um, approving the officer back in to appoint the one I'm very comfortable with, and I would, I would think we can wait the two months in special town and, and get the town's permission to spend that money. That way, we know we have the money, we know we can hire somebody with the job, not with a contingent upon getting a special town, getting approval, finding funding. And it's really not our place to spend funding and assume we could make it up at the end of the year, transferring between accounts if we need to. I'd like to, I'd like to give one right now.
I would tend to agree with you in some circumstances. Uh, when I, when you think about our obligation to the community to ensure its safety, by not doing this, we are saying, pretty much, we think it's good enough, and we'll let you know after the, the town meeting. That's what makes me nervous.
Well, it has been. We've been operating off, off the nine. The, the ten is bringing it up to a standard we haven't had in, um, thirteen years. So we're bringing it up to the standard that we have been in the town's approved. We're talking, we're bringing it up to the standard from thirteen years ago, and that, that.
Do we have, do we have any new information that thinks that we should move more rapidly on this? I don't know. I'm not out on the street.
I mean, my, my concern is, is that, um, obviously with the, with the certain recent changes, morale has improved, but, you know, we're denying time off, you know, we're, the guys are going to get burnt out quickly.
Uh, well, I, I don't think that we should close the door on this conversation. I think we should have, continue our conversation, maybe not tonight, but I think we need to, to, to think this through carefully because there is nothing more important in our community as we look at making sure our schools are safe, uh, that our, our police officers are put in situations where it is reasonable to assume that they can perform their duties. You don't just have to click on the TV on any given night and see the situations that exist across the country.
I know, but in, in fairness for the conversation for other sides, there are towns that don't staff officers overnight, period, that they just don't have the funding, and the towns are not willing to pay for it. They don't have policing. Um, we're not, we're not there.
No, we're not.
But, but certainly I want the town's approval. We owe them that, as this board, I believe, to, to spend more money. I don't think we'll have a problem with the town. I think they'll approve it. I think they're very happy with the officers now. I think that, uh, we're starting to have some officers that have stayed for several years, and people want that.
No, the thing is, I don't, I, I don't want the town happy. I want the town safe, even if they're unhappy.
(laughing). Well.
I mean, and the, the other thing too is, is that it's, hiring police officers is more and more difficult.
I know it is.
So it may, I mean, I could have a posting out there for a month or two and not have any qualified applicants. So, I mean, I would like to, to post it sooner rather than later because by the time, by the town, the special town meeting rolls around, like approval then, then post a position, it'll be July before, before I put the officer.
I, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with posting a position, just to see if there's, you know, some situation that we may be able to go to town meeting and actually have a candidate that's two or three weeks away from hiring versus two or three months.
So I'll make a motion that we allow the, the chief to hire an officer now to fill that empty spot and to advertise for one more officer to see how we can do.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, we'll have to see if we can come up with funding, but that should get the ball rolling.
Yep.
And it would have to be pending our approval before he hires a second officer. Fair enough?
Absolutely. I would, I would.
Yeah, a second, I want.
Okay, motion second to hire one and advertise for a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Um, and then the other issue was, um, currently, I know we did just increase the part-time pay, uh, up to nineteen dollars and twenty cents, but seeing as how you can make pizza at Red Tomato for twenty dollars an hour, I would like to raise.
We only went to nineteen?
The, uh, pay rate.
To?
Twenty-one fifty, which is, that's, puts a, puts us more on par with, like, what Rutland's part-timers are making.
Um, how, what, what's the, what do you expect the impact to be? I don't know how many hours generally part, part-timers are working, so.
Well, right now with, uh, with the Bridge Academy and the part-time officers having the opportunity to go full-time, I'm just hoping to keep a few that wanna, you know, we have a couple that, um, have full-time jobs, you know, outside.
Right.
That seem very dedicated and that kinda, definitely wanna.
So how many hours would you say you have in part-time work? So if we raised it, you know?
So, again, with the tenth officer, then part-timers would only be filling for vacation time, training time. It wouldn't be, like, right now, we have open shifts that are holes in the schedule that we have to fill with, either part-time or overtime.
Okay.
So part-timers would.
And it's harder to fill at the lesser pay. I, I, I'm surprised with that low, really. Um, I thought we went, for some reason, I thought we went higher. Maybe I was thinking DPW, cause I know we had to bump DPW.
We did just bump the pay higher. That's just.
I think it was sixteen or seventeen.
Yeah, it was pretty.
Which is ridiculous.
Is there anything that stops us from, from taking the recommendation that the, the chief has given us, which is to raise it from nineteen to twenty-one fifty?
I, I have no objections. I'm, I'm wondering if it's enough, and we have to do this again in a couple months.
Well, so the, the other, the reason that I also chose twenty-one fifty is that puts them below the lowest, uh, step for a full-time officer.
Okay, makes sense.
And how low's the lowest step before?
It's like twenty-one eighty-something.
And that's until they've done their training, basically. All right, that, that's reasonable for me.
Uh, I move then that we, um, increase the pay for part-time, um, officers to twenty-one dollars and fifty cents, effective January first?
Yes. Well, whenever I can get the wage authorization.
Second, I want.
Motion a second to, um, increase the part-time wage to twenty-one fifty, setting January first. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Jim. Congratulations. Good luck. Let us know if you need anything else from us.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we'll try to get this posted, probably in April for, um, working out of the permanent spot. And, um, you know, we're fairly posted internally as we talked about, and go from there. And I expect we'll be able to get this hammered out by the end of the year and, and make this, uh, hopefully more permanent.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that. Okay, we're good. You need us to do anything specific right now, or just?
No, I was just here to help you through that conversation.
And you'll work on an interim contract with Jessica that we can actually get signed in the near future?
Okay.
And it will reflect that pay as, I would assume, just a stipend form?
The, the only, the only other thing is that, um, I'm, I'm gonna ask Jessica to send you the current police, I'm sorry, the fire chief's, um, contract, so you can look over it and give us recommendations for making sure it's in appropriate, okay, fashion and so forth.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you guys need time for that? Do we need?
Not tonight. No, I, no, I, I think that she, she can take the document and figure it out.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Okay, we are getting through some of this stuff.
Yeah, and we, we think we're ready on Maple Winds Arts Holiday Concert.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's where we're at at this point.
Yep.
Trying to read what this one has, this Republican Town Committee?
Oh, yeah, it used to, the Democratic Town Committee used to meet there occasionally, and, you know, and they have, sometimes they'll have somebody like, you know, our, our representative, a congressional representative will come and speak, or have office hours, or send the aide. It's, um, pretty innocuous stuff. Seldom, actually, ends up happening.
Set on the two-fiftieth, license renewal. Listen, I'm not seeing another, um.
It was right before the Republican Town Committee?
Maybe it was right here.
Oh, wait a minute.
They're looking for just a Christmas kind of thing, I guess, on the twenty-third?
I don't, I don't have it.
Looking for just December twenty-third to do some sort of a, a Christmas present. I, I was.
They need that to be, they have a concert.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's Christmas for a holiday.
And this, this is just a nonprofit that comes in?
Yeah.
All right, I look for a motion for that, then.
So move the approval for the Maple Winds Arts Concert on the twenty-third of December.
You have a second?
Not yet.
I'll make it.
All right, motion in a second to approve Maple Winds. Um, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we have the Congressional Candidate Speaking Engagement, which is going to be on January, is it twenty-third?
Twenty-third, yep.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Move approval?
Now, second it. There's a motion a second to approve the Republican Congressional, pardon me, the Congressional Candidate Speak Engagement on the twenty-third. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All right, go ahead, Timmy.
You second. You were.
I second, I second, you're right.
I thought Dylan did.
I seconded that one.
Okay.
Further discussion will be, would this be a nonprofit, or what would be classified as a nonprofit?
I would think a nonprofit as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Cause it's the Republican Town Committee?
Yeah, Town Committee.
I think they're generally nonprofit.
Coffee and pastries, too. Look at that.
Really gotta have some of them, then they have to come.
If Duncan's ever.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, license renewals.
These are just a couple, couple stragglers that came through.
I have one, then I have wage authorizations. Is it just the one, or am I?
It's just that one sheet. It has class two auto renewal.
Oh, it's got a couple on it. Oh, okay.
Right there, okay.
Brilliant, aren't I? Okay, so, class two B C auto, also known as Johnson A and B Auto?
Yeah.
Well, they're two different ones. I just, we got the, the other one.
Also B C Auto and A S A Johnson?
Ah, A S A Johnson. That's the manager's name and his.
A and B Auto.
Yeah, his business is A and B Auto.
So it's B C Auto and A and B Auto?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve the, uh, class two license for B and C Auto and A and B Auto.
Second?
Aye.
Motion second to approve the license. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Inholder common particular license renewal, none. Common particular, is that?
Victular.
I know I said victular, like, that doesn't sound, victular.
Yeah.
Common victular license for Northeast Pizza.
Uh, move approval?
Second.
Motion a second to approve, uh, Northeast Pizza. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And entertainment for Northeast Pizza?
Move approval?
Move, second?
Motion second to move approval for entertainment for Northeast Pizza. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Looks like we have wage or authorizations for Karen Barlow.
These are all, number one through four are all new employees as well, so they're appointments and wage authorizations. It can be done all in one motion, but.
No, we can't. Um, I'm gonna stay out of the.
Well, the, I, no, I, I mean, each one can be like an appointment and a wage authorization, and one, as we go down the list, like, I know you like to abstain from the fire department ones, but they can be appointed and have their wages approved in one.
So we're looking to appoint Ryan Connors, a part-time police officer, and approve his wage authorization.
Right.
Of now twenty-one fifty? Well, no, not yet. Starting, pardon me, it's at nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, nineteen for now.
Until, yeah.
Until it's for us. We're also looking to appoint.
Astiquio.
Astiquio?
Yes, Rodriguez Fielo.
All right. There's a part-time for one year, the same period of nineteen, nineteen an hour. And then for the clerk, we're looking to put on Karen Barlow. At seventeen forty-two per hour for an average of thirteen hours per week. I'd like to address those three first.
I move approval of those read, uh, read into the record by the chair.
Second.
We have motion in a second for those to be approved. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? And we have a Cory Placy or Placy?
Placy.
Placy.
Um, to be appointed for, does it say full-time medic?
Yeah, paramedic, yes.
Nice.
Firefighter paramedic.
And, um.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five forty-two an hour, so appointment and wage authorization.
Uh, move approval of Cory Placy as written, as read into the record by the chair?
Second, I want.
Motion second for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain. Counsel on aging membership issue. So we had recently appointed Dennis Fleming. He is now withdrawn from the position.
He's, he's resigning tonight. Will accept his resignation tonight?
Will accept his resignation, yes. And, um, we have a new member to appoint?
Looks like two new members, Linda Masek and Roger Courier.
Where are we seeing those? Oh, and it's, if I follow this paper right, I'm looking for it in the folders, why?
Okay.
All right, so we'll look for a motion to accept Dennis's resignation and appoint Roger Courier and Edward?
No, Linda Masek.
Linda Masek and Roger Courier.
Yes, to the council on aging.
Council on aging.
I would move approval of the, um, appointments as read into the record by the chair.
Second, I want.
And the resignation?
And the resignation of Dennis Fleming, from the council on aging.
So a motion a second to accept Dennis Fleming's resignation and Linda and Roger appointments to the council on aging. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Financial software proposal. So much for this being quick tonight.
There's, wait, did you do the two-fiftieth appointment?
No, we didn't.
Number seven.
Edward Combs.
Okay.
I thought I should.
Um, make a motion. We point Edward Combs to two-fiftieth anniversary committee.
I would second that motion.
Motion second to appoint Edward Combs to two-fiftieth. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Jessica, take it away.
Sure. So af, for the past several months, um, Maureen, myself, and the treasure collector, our accountant, and our assessor have been meeting to work on items in our audit. The biggest one being the financial software issue that we've had for a number of years that was finally, um, you know, put into writing within our audit. And I think that this decision will, the decision to get, um, all of our departments on one financial software will help guide us towards addressing other issues within our audit. Um, so we went, and we, we talked to VEDAR, which is the system that the treasure collector and the assessor are already on. And then we also talked to Springbrook, which is the company that purchased Softwrite, which is the software that the accountant was on. I also reached out to Munis, which is another popular, um, Munis will finance software, and I did not hear back from them. So we, over, as I said, over the past couple of months, we've done extensive interviews and, and we've watched, you know, presentations, and I've met with both parties, um, individually to discuss what options are available to us, you know, basically to get a good feel for, um, both of the softwares and what they could offer to the town. And then these were the, within your packet, there are two proposals from Springbrook and VEDAR. So VEDAR would be approximately ninety-nine hundred dollars a year, almost ten thousand dollars a year. And then Springbrook, um, is quite a bit more expensive at, annually, it would be eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for the payroll and utility billing, and then it would be another, another thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars a year for the finance suite subscription. Um, and that doesn't include additional one-time costs, you know, services to put the software on the computers and training and all of that kind of stuff. The professional.
Sounds like a choiceless choice there, doesn't it?
Right, right.
Well, I, I would comment that VEDAR, in, in my opinion, even if they were exactly the same price, I would have moved to VEDAR just because it's a Massachusetts company. We have good experience with, um, VEDAR. Uh, Rutland, for example, we worked with them a little bit to find out what do they do, what do they use? And, uh, Springbrook has just bought out Softwrite?
Softwrite, yep.
And as a result, we found that they were not Massachusetts bond, that they didn't have a lot of clients here. In fact, the only place we could find that was picking them up was the town of Ocam.
Which, we're not sure if it's Ocam, because after seeing the prices here, we're like, I don't know if it's Ocam. It might be like Oaks Bluff.
Or something, yeah.
You know, another small town.
But at any rate, so, I don't think it was a, a very difficult decision. The only thing that I would tell you is everyone in the finance suite is not happy because there's gonna be change. Changing in software always aggravates everybody who. Changing in software always aggravates everybody who has to make the change.
Particularly this is going to be the change for the accountant.
Yes.
Right.
But she has indicated that she is familiar with the software, and she has used it. That was our original concern. We discussed this.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, two, two years ago now.
So at any rate.
She did say she's, she's, it's not that she's worried about learning it.
Oh, no.
That's not a problem.
But she's worried about our legacy documents and, and so forth. And after conversations with Vadar, we can, um, ask them to work with her to have a crosswalk.
Yeah.
So that we will bridge into the other documents, so we will have a financial history. So I think we solved that problem. I would say that, um, we started out having meetings, um, every couple of weeks together, and they put a lot of time and effort into this. They're to be commended for that, and commended also for smiling at me, even if they don't want to, about this. Cause I mean, really, everybody would have just preferred.
They know it's, they know it's coming.
They do know it's coming and, um.
This, like, as we started this a couple of years ago.
And, and we will be making the rollover in Ja- July. And so they will be working very hard from January to July to prepare us for that. And obviously, it will impact our workers and our, and so we will make sure that we provide them with the, um, support that they need. And, um, it, it's going to be a lot of work for them. And let's not underestimate the fact that work sometimes is unappreciated if you don't know what's happening. So we have to make sure it's, that we appreciate what they're doing and how they're making all of this come to. Cause Jessica can't do it by herself, Maureen Marshall can't do it, the selectman can't do it. It's really the people on the ground have to grind it out. And, um, I would say for the most part, they've been pretty reasonably, um, cooperative. Not smiling every day, as I said. But, um, hopefully that we'll make, um, good progress here. So I would move the recommendation of the, um, administrative assistant that we, um, work, continue to work, uh, to pursue Vadar and to ensure that they are providing us with the financial management systems that we need.
Very good.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion is second to move forward with, um, bringing all of our town accounting systems onto Vadar and, and being a one streamlined system.
And, and with our thanks to those people who will be doing the implementation.
Well, yes, and, and everyone in town for, for working with us on this because we, we, we tried to do without, we tried to avoid this in the past. But, um, obviously with our, um, our audits coming back, continuing with the same issues, we, we need to address this.
Right.
I'm thankful that everyone is, is, is playing nicely here and, and agreeing to get this done. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 There we go. Thank you, uh, social Maureen. Thank you for all that time.
Oh, not a problem.
I know it's a lot of extra time. Um, it's nice to have that finally done. Um, C M R C P C, ugh, wow. C M R P C master plan. Can tell I'm cold. I'm spitting my words out, right? So where are we at with that? This is.
Yes, so this is C M R P C's proposal. Um, Trish came to us and she talked about the C M R P C's capacity to do a master plan for the town of Barry, and this is their formal proposal. Um, it comes to, I believe, I'm trying to find the bottom line. It was about ninety-six thousand dollars.
Ninety-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, yes.
Page twenty-two.
Yes. Um, ninety-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to do the entire project.
Let's see, spread out over how long are we talking?
So.
Not long enough.
It's two phases. Um, we have phase one and then phase two. I would say this whole project would take about twenty-four months. And so obviously, I secured forty-five thousand dollars worth of funding, but I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that we could find additional grant money to cover the other half of this project.
What, you don't thi- you think we could do it?
Yeah.
Oh.
That, that, that would be amazing. Um, but either way, this is something we need to have done.
Yes.
Right.
We've talked about a master plan for, uh, many years here now. Since I've been on the board, we've been talking about getting to it and getting it done. And, uh, we know the, uh, planning board has finally spoken up about it, that they want to get moving on it. And I would like to know, have they been shown this or, cause this is going to be working with them largely, have we?
Right.
I don't want to jump the gun and do yet another time that we do something without getting their input first.
Right.
Because I would like to make sure they understand that we know and acknowledge that the master plan is their baby.
Right.
And this is a company that would be, um, you know, running most of the work for them.
Yeah, no, definitely. I would have to go back and check if they were copied on that email, um, and if not, I'll definitely send it over to them.
So I would recommend we, unless anyone has questions, we table this for now until we make sure that the planning board has ample time, um, to review this. And we all can look at the proposal as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm inclined to move forward with it, but I, I definitely want to have, um, their input before we, um, take any action.
Agreed.
It's, it's, it's never been my intent to cut them out of the loop in the past. Um, so I'm trying to be more mindful. So at that table, let's move forward to opioid settlement. This, you know, I'm sure, have we all got emails about it? Just me, or have you got these?
I didn't get the email, but I got your email, so.
Okay, so I was trying to just forward this to you. Um, Jessica's indicated that they are encouraging all municipalities to, to get involved in this.
Yeah.
And they are dictating what you can do with any funds you get for it.
Yeah.
You know, without even looking into how the funds would be used at this point, I think if this is settled with the state, they'd like us to get in. It's probably in our best interest to, to get in on that rather than look for our own. We're, we're obviously not going to take the opioid companies to court.
I agree.
Um, so if the state can come up with some funds for us, and, you know, if that did in some way allow us to reimburse, I checked with Chief Ogowski. We made, I think he said it was eighty-two ambulance runs in the last three years for overdoses for opioids.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, if there's any way that helps us reimburse a fire department, great.
Mm-hmm.
But if it strictly goes to education, I would, I would be inclined to say that any funds we, we have, we redirect right to, um, N E C R in the, um, Q drug, cause that's really our only local source that we have for, um. For drug education. But we don't have to decide that right now, just whether or not we want to go ahead and, um, join the state's lawsuit as they have asked us to do. And we need to do it before January something, very soon.
It's very soon.
Yeah.
January second.
As, do you need any support or help with that, um, application, Jessica?
No, I actually, I included the form. It's after the legal language. And it's very short and simple. It's just a, a form that I have to fill out with all of our, our town's information, and then I have to sign it. And then I just submit it to the A G's office that way. So it's pretty straightforward.
All right. Dylan, do you have any questions on this? Did you look through the email I forwarded to you for it?
Yeah, I don't have any questions at the moment. Uh, and we are on a deadline, so, um, I feel comfortable moving forward with this.
All right.
I move approval of the, um, chair's recommendation that we pursue, um, participation in the opioid, uh, settlement.
Second.
Motion is second to, um, have Jessica proceed and get us into the opioid settlement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you catch me? Aye.
All right, okay, thank you. I didn't hear it, I just.
Sorry, the, the speakers are kind of quiet on the computer, so.
Okay.
Make a motion. We approve our meeting minutes for Monday, November twenty-second.
Second.
And these are strictly executive session?
Yes.
It was.
Except for the last one that says December twenty-second, which is obviously November twenty.
Yes, November twenty-second.
I just said November twenty-second here, I'm looking at. And we just came in to do executive session. We did no other business.
There was no open session that day?
Uh, no.
The twenty-second, no.
We opened, went to executive, so, um.
All right, then we can get rid of that one.
We're still not prepped for release at this point?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so, motion to approve and not release the minutes from November twenty-second?
So move.
Oh. Motion is second to approve the meeting minutes in executive session, but not for release yet from November twenty-second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
December sixth. I'm trying to separate these, make sure I get the whole pieces. Oh, it was a big meeting. Wow. Okay, so. December sixth, we have an executive.
For the fire chief, executive for this police chief, and those will not be released. And December sixth for the open session will be released. And I would, I would move approval.
Are they separated in here?
Yeah, those are all separate.
There, are they separated? And I'm seeing open the meeting, executive. Just trying to find the separation.
Believe they're appended. Go look at the end.
Okay, we just, I'm looking at the November twenty-second. I'm not doing all of my paperwork tonight. So we, we did have, I did the executives, and I'm looking at the, uh, we didn't do the November twenty-second open yet, okay. That's what I just messed up. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the open meeting minutes for December sixth.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Now we'll do the executive session for December sixth. Which is once again going to be approval, but not release.
I, I recommend approval, but not for public release at this time.
And that will be both sets. There are both.
There's one.
Fire and police.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second for approval of two sets of executive session for strategizing with, um, fire chief and police chief.
Right.
Once again, not for release at this time. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And finally, now the November twenty-second, um, open meeting minutes.
It was a wage authorization.
Which was a wage authorization, and that was it.
Yep. Move approval on the open session for November twenty-first.
Motion is second to approve the open minute sessions, open meeting session minutes for November twenty-second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence to cover?
Um, I did receive a correspondence from the senior center director with a letter of resignation as of January third, today, this afternoon. And everybody else received it as well. It's just.
It was sent to me by email, yes.
In the email, yes.
Today?
Today.
Apparently I had to chat with you this morning a little bit too late, didn't I?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Okay, so why don't we get that advertised?
I already talked to the Hardwick Town Administrator about it as well, um, because since we, oh, obviously Barry is the hiring authority, but it's always good to work with our municipal partners.
Did she have a reason for her resignation?
Yes, it was based on financial, for financial reasons.
She felt that the salary that she was being paid was not sufficient?
I agree.
Yeah.
Um, when, when we did hire her, um, it was lower than she intended, but that's what we had here marked at the time. And we, we brought in Hardwick. Um, it was my request back then that we take a portion. Hardwick, the first year, just paid us what they received from their, their state money for people who came for meals and buy their numbers. And that allowance is something in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars. Um, after the first year was done, they wanted to, um, have the same deal again, and I suggested they pass my percentage because beyond our state funds, we spent something in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars out of our town coffers.
Mm-hmm.
And I suggested that since they were, it'd be, they were eighteen percent of our use, that they pay eighteen percent of that. And they gladly agreed. And my suggestion was that that money shouldn't go directly on our coffers. It should go some to bump her salary because we have increased her, her personnel by, you know, twenty percent down there. Well, it's almost twenty-five percent, given that it was almost a fifth. And I didn't pay attention, unfortunately, to, to that being followed. And the salary was never risen. It was my intent that if, you know, if we did that, we should have bumped her salary.
Was it your intent or did the board vote it?
Um.
What if you check it?
I, I don't, I don't recall if it was voted, but there was never any definite, definitive number. It was that some, some portion should be made. I could call Andrew and ask if he recalls how left off, but, um, that's, you know, that's a failing of my part to have not, um, you know, readdressed that and, and looked into it in the past, cause it was never my intention to leave for a salary in the range it was. We took on, and she's done a fantastic job here. I think that if you look at her monthly calendars, I think we get, um, what a much larger, larger town might expect from a director down there, and I'd hate to lose her. Is she already found another position? Is she's already moving on, or is it?
Uh, she doesn't say. She offered to stay on in a, um, consulting capacity for no more than ten hours a week. At, at fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, um, oh, yeah, that's, that's much higher than her, than her pay rate at that point, but, um, you maybe wouldn't make a difference, uh, you know, we could, we could check it. And I would think that the salary should go up to probably, you know, four thousand dollars or possibly. The money we got from Hardwick was, was money we'd already committed to spending. It was just money that went back into our coffers. And it was not my intent to bring, anyways, my intent to bring our payout. Not for all of it, but a good portion.
I don't, I don't know, and I certainly am not going to comment on the quality of her work. I mean, I'm not really that familiar with it, and I, you know, being new, I'm not. But, um, obviously, I don't know if this is a, a negotiation ploy, which it says, now I just quit. Or if there was ever any effort on her part to come forward in a, in a way to you or to us and say, I'd like to have, uh, renegotiate this opportunity. I, I don't know. The thing went on and on, and it was quite convoluted. So, I don't know the history, but quite convoluted in the letter, so I couldn't figure out what it was she was most angry about. Um, that we didn't res- she, she seemingly made it sound like we, she, that we knew all of these little things and we didn't respond to it. And that, I don't think is true. So I don't know if she's.
I haven't read the letter yet, cause I haven't been home for my email today.
Well, so I don't, I don't know if this is a person who wants to, um, or is making an overture to say, I would like to renegotiate my, my salary. It doesn't sound that way, but I don't know if that's it. If that's it, then are we open to doing that? If that's not it, let's advertise a position. I, I don't know. When you read it, see what you think.
All right, I, it's going to be moot if, if she's, what date did she give us?
January third.
So that's coming up pretty quick, so.
Well, we, you know, we may have to, if we, if we, I don't know, do we have subs? Or, or would we just close it for a couple of weeks until we could get, I, I would hate to do that, I mean.
I would think we could probably get somebody from the, um, committee to.
Could you think?
To fill in and keep it open.
I'm never, I'm never, you know, from what people are describing about trying to hire people now, it's just really very difficult. Maybe it isn't. Maybe if we hi- we put in, you know, an advertisement in there. I just don't know from the, the way in which she structured her, her letter, what she's looking for, whether this is, I'm angry and I'm leaving, or I'm angry, but I'll stay for ten hours for five hundred dollars a week. I, I'm not quite sure.
Right. I, I don't know without reading it. Um, I would say feel free if, like, you don't have enough to do right now, but I mean, it would, it would warrant a conversation with someone on the board. I'm going to be out of town for the next two days, so I won't be back in town till Thursday. So I couldn't even get a chance to talk to her until that.
Well, I, I could, you know, uh, you know, have a conversation with her, maybe Jessica, I wouldn't want to do it by myself.
Yeah, no, of course.
Um, and just to see, say, okay, I, I'm new, I don't know I do what you're talking about. Cause that's what I would tell her with, with the letter. And say, what i- what is it? And, um, if, if there's any negotiable issue or not. And if, if there's any negotiable issue or not, I don't know. It's not clear to me. And so I, I think we fish or cup bait. I mean, she'll have to make a decision about it. I think she sounds angry to me. Would you say?
Yeah.
Angry, by being overlooked. Not by Jessica, probably by some people who didn't know we were overlooking.
I, 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 I don't recall having any complaints from her about anything.
I'll be happy to have a conversation with her. Maybe we can ask her to come up, or maybe go down. I don't, whatever is easy. Everybody's schedule is a little crazy in the next couple of days, but we can see what we can, we can see what we can work out.
All right, if, if need be, we can advertise, start an advertisement anyways. We can always, you know, cancel it and, and we don't have to hire. But we should get an advertisement posted and be prepared to fill the spot. And, you know, we'd want to get whatever we can for candidates if we open it for two weeks. If we get at least, at least, I'd like three, but I mean, even at least two candidates we can interview and see if we're willing to put somebody in.
I don't know what the qualifications are. You probably know better than I do.
Yeah, I would have to review the job description.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, go, go from there. In the meantime, I would think maybe it, it's worth discussing, discussing a bump in pay coming up for next year. You know, once again, budgeting, we're already going to have an issue with getting more offices, or we can't approve more money this year.
Right.
But substantial pay bump. Her salary is, do you have the?
Uh, forty-four thousand, roughly.
Forty-four now, yeah. I would, I would expect to put her closer to fifty with using some of the funds from. We, we seriously took, let's say if she had, you know, eighteen percent, so she had eighty-two people, and now she's got a hundred. We, we jumped up by, you know, a large percentage on her for who she's, you know, transporting and taking care of and arranging activities for, I mean, it's, that's a direct proportionate increase in her duties and responsibilities. It was the intention I had then, and, and I, I feel like an ask, quite frankly, for not following up on it. That, that would have been put into her salary, a portion of it, in the budgeting process of the next year. But there's so much goes on, and you just don't think about every little line item on it, and.
Well, we'll, we'll talk to her and see what it looks like. It will either be, you know, keep, and we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, please, please do. We can just, you know, we can just, I can't respond, but you can certainly send me an email to let me know what you've.
Well, you can talk with Jessica, Jessica.
Yeah, and she can let me know what's going on. You guys can always give me an update if something's occurred, so I can be aware of it, but we just can't converse over it.
Understand.
Any dialogue on it.
Yep.
And, you know, if you found that she wanted to talk to me as well or something, you can certainly put that in, in an email to me. And I'd be curious, seeing if she's just done and wants to leave, if it's already gone, you know, she's been quiet too long and that fed up. That sometimes you just, there's nothing you can do about that. But we'll, we'll see. Any other correspondence?
That's all I have.
Okay. Select Board reports?
I have nothing other than what was in the VEDAR thing about changing our financial management practices.
Okay. Dylan?
Uh, I just want to wish everyone listening a safe and healthy holiday season and New Year. It seems like there's a lot of good stuff happening around town, from the trunk or treat to the Christmas berry to this new ice skating rink. Seems like there's a lot of stuff happening, and I feel like it sends a signal that our town is, is doing well and looks strong. And despite two years of COVID, there's still a lot of community spirit, and I'm excited to see what we do collectively in 2022. So I want to thank Dr. Marshall, Chairman Solomon, Sandy, and Jessica for all your hard work this year. And it's been a real pleasure.
I guess I would say what he said. Thank you very much, Dylan.
I'm going to cover something unusual quickly tonight. I had a discussion with Jason Pimental recently. An opportunity came up for him to purchase a ten-wheel truck, and that's something we've been trying to get down the DPW. They've been asking for, for several years, but the problem is a ten-wheel truck is sort of a quarter million dollar capital purchase item, which keeps getting pushed off on our, on our budgeting process because it's, it's simply not there right now. It's not eligible for chapter ninety funds, which would have to be coming out of that town coffers. And he said, there's someone he knows whose husband has passed away that had vehicles, and one of them he'd like to be able to purchase is, is a ten-wheeler that was. Do you remember the year? Did he give you the year on it?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven.
The exact same one as the, the Georgia, the one in your packet here that says from Georgia, the two thousand seven Mack Granite CTP seven-one-three. So that's essentially the truck.
It's essentially the truck with a couple of exceptions. This one is fifty-nine thousand dollars. He said they're asking, I believe he said fifty for this. And the hugest difference is this is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand miles. He's looking at one with thirty-eight thousand miles on it, which is unheard of. I asked him to get some comps to show the board. You can't, you can't find one with thirty thousand miles. It would be over a hundred thousand dollars. It's again, I don't know if there's anything we could do on this. But, you know, other comps, you know, you get a two thousand and six for sixty-five thousand with four hundred and forty-seven thousand miles on it, and it's still fourteen thousand.
That's crazy.
But this is what they go for.
Oh, no, no, I, no, I, I don't.
It's one of those things that, there's a missing thing I couldn't find. I don't know. We're talking about all the things of money tonight. We can't just spend money. And I don't know if there's a way we can come up with to, it's something we've needed to do at the DPW. We need the larger truck. It's got a larger capacity. It's, you know, your six-wheel trucks, you're hauling very limited, I want to say maybe ten-yard load, and this is twenty. It's going to double the capacity when they're hauling material and doing projects.
Do we, do we use it a lot? Would we use it?
Oh, it would be used a lot, yes. It would also be used for plowing. It has a plow in this area on it already as well, which is basically all we got used it for, I believe. And it would be used for the major roads, so this would do, you know, one-twenty-two probably, and things like that. Where typically, it may be done with a single plow pass too, as well, would be my guess. As opposed to usually having a six-wheel truck and another truck pushing beside it. This, I believe, would, would do the road.
Like, do thirty-two?
Yes, just, just make a pass.
Well, I'm, I'm.
But I don't know how we would.
I'm, I would say that the only way that I would feel comfortable with pursuing this, like, right now, is to convene the DPW crowd with us and say, are we all on board with this? And then we figure it out. I would not do this without, you know, working with them and having, having an assurance either. I don't know anything about a ten-wheel, okay, dump. And if I were to look at it, I could not ensure the town, yeah, this is really worth fifty grand. I would like to make certain, I know our, our mechanic's been ill.
Yeah.
So I don't know if he could even look it over. I would just want to make sure that if it looks too good to be true, it might not be true. And I would like to make sure that, that the nine people who are, you know, working in, you know, with, with Jason, you know, whether we could convene a meeting with them as early as, you know, the, what, right after Christmas on the, on that Monday. They're not great at showing up at meetings, but we can say to them.
If something, if something, the concern is obviously if this is as it seems to be.
If it is.
It's going to disappear quickly.
Yeah.
Jason is an ASE certified mechanic.
Okay.
So there's, there's a little more qualified than him to, to look at it.
Okay.
I, I did mechanics on trucks in the military for quite a while, and I did it full-time for several years.
Have you gone to see it?
I have not gone to see it.
My concern is that while I think it would be our responsibility to contemplate whether or not, or how we could fund it, it would be the responsibility of the DPW commission to say, it's a go. Because if we do it just, you know, kind of saying, oh, yeah, we're sitting here, and Jason thinks this is a good idea. If I were the other gentleman on that committee, I'd say, who the heck are the selectmen? We don't want this truck. And, you know, I feel that we're part of that group, that we're not necessarily run the group.
Right. The, obviously, all capital purchases, things like this do go through us.
Ultimately.
Unless you pursue this through water or sewer somehow.
Yeah.
And, and, and I don't know.
It really is not a water or sewer truck, right?
Well.
It, it is.
Yeah.
For hauling material, that's part of it. You're going to haul twenty yard, you're going to haul a lot more material in this truck than a smaller truck. So, you know, maybe that's a recommendation to go through water and sewer. I don't know if those enterprise funds, if they have the ability to do that, or, or, or that's what I'm thinking of.
Well.
He suggested maybe he could push it for snow and ice. I said, no, a capital purchase, it's snow and ice.
That's just, that's just an outright lie.
Yeah, it's, it's just.
We can't do that.
It's going to be for plowing and things, but it's not the right way to go after it. I don't think it, I don't think it works that way. I don't get the reason to put an overage in that budget and fit it in that budget. It's not what it was for.
So in, in our capital purchase plan, it shows that the ten-wheel dump truck was supposed to have been purchased two, two years ago.
He's been excellent.
And the, the idea was to split the cost three ways with the two enterprise accounts.
So we're sort of doing that, except we're not paying our share, the enterprise account.
Well, dude, even if we paid our share, at that point, we're, we're talking like sixteen thousand dollars. He thinks, he thinks he can get it for even less than they've asked for.
Unless he.
It sounds like it's somebody he knows.
Oh, okay.
And this is why he's getting this opportunity, but the opportunity is not going to last long.
We, well, we agree. But can't we get together with the nine of them? I mean, you're going away, you said, right? Next, after.
Right. We, we, I, I'd say the best thing we could try to do is, we need two days to post?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours.
We just say, we could have.
If we posted tomorrow and said we're going to have a meeting Thursday, then invite all the members and see if they'll convene. We could try to meet Thursday night at seven o'clock.
Well, I can't meet Thursday night because I have dinner engagement, but I can meet on the, on Monday, the twenty.
Well, Monday's the town's holiday.
And that's, we're going to be too far out. That's the problem. We can't do it earlier than Thursday. We could do it.
I might be able to join you virtually.
Oh, well, that'd be fine.
You know what I mean? If we can make it a virtual thing.
If we could do a seven o'clock and do a virtual, then everybody could come too.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I think we need to encourage them to do that.
And then the water and sewer would have a chance to, and then it's posted, so everybody has a chance to have a say on it if they want to join in the meeting. Because townspeople may have a provo con opinion to this, but I wanted to address this tonight because it came up. It's unusual that I couldn't get this on the agenda. This came up today.
I understand.
And it's one of those things.
But it needs to be agended, it needs to be dealt with by the, by the whole, and if we can use enterprise funds.
I agree, but this is where we have to start, and, and I think it is a very good opportunity for something we have been looking for. And it's hugely affordable compared to buying a new one.
Say no more, right.
And as you can see, as I showed you, the fact that this guy has, you know, thirty-eight thousand miles in, you know, fifteen years, he's only doing some sanding with it every year. It's all he's done with it that's been sitting. These other trucks are that same age of almost half a million miles on them, so.
Hopefully it's not.
They're good for longevity. They really are.
Hopefully it's not all rusted out or something.
Uh, no, he said it is not, and I mean, you know, I take him at his word for that. The trucks do hold up well.
And the thing that, that I'm, I'm always concerned about is there's a lot of stuff around the DPW garage that isn't really functioning anymore. It's just there.
We do hold on old equipment and not let go of it.
Yeah, well, but it looks like a junk heap down there. And I think that if we're going to bring in another big oper, you know, I don't know where he was going.
No, that's going to wind up indoors now.
Okay, but I'm, but I'm saying that there's still a lot of crap outdoors, and I really feel strongly that if that can go to some, you know, place where they recycle, you know, metal, let it go. It's a, it, I mean, aren't you, aren't you kind of embarrassed?
Another conversation for the commission down there.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you that if, if anything.
It's time to let go of some stuff and not use it down there.
Well, the thing that I think is, you know, for all the good work people do, and then somebody goes down there to go into the office or do this, and they see all this stuff, they, they, they complain to me like, what, what about this? There's all this junk, there's this old thing, there's that old thing, and you know.
I wonder if there's any grant money to be found to try to find another building down there.
Well, I don't think any, I don't think some of it should be in a building. I think it should be in a junk heap.
I know, but still, there's, there's, some of the things should be indoors and aren't.
Okay, I'm happy, I'm happy to have that conversation, but, you know, I, I just, I just think that when, when you buy a piece of equipment, even if it's, you know, because you know they'll all say the new truck and it costs, you know, the stuff around town will be not, but it's fifty thousand dollars. But then we buy pieces of equipment and stuff that we demonstrate that we take good care of it. And that it's not just left in a heap in the back of the room. I mean, I don't know. I'm just picky about that kind of stuff.
So without, without killing any more time on it, I, I just, that was my intent to address it and bring it to the board.
So, so Thursday at seven?
We'll talk, we'll meet Thursday at seven.
And you'll do a, you'll do a virtual?
Yeah, I think it'll be up to the DPW staff to make sure it's posted and everything for that commission. But I could, they have all of the instructions to use it, and I can make sure that it is posted.
I'd, I'd say we want a posted host, and we would suggest we could have a meeting down there because that's what they like to meet for those who want to meet in person.
Well, but the only problem is that they have.
They never want to come up here.
So you wouldn't be able to hear or see me unless you're you getting me on my, your phone.
Right.
Because they don't have anything. They have to meet here, if we're going to Zoom it. And.
Well, they've done, I think they've done Zoom down there before.
You can set a laptop up and just have it at one end of the table.
Well, I will, I will work very.
Because they're not recording the meetings down there anyways.
I will work very hard to get there.
Which we're going to have to come up with recording meetings again.
Right.
Very soon because we think that's, that's going to happen. But we're not recording down there yet, so we can.
Yeah, you could definitely do that and do a gallery so that they could see more than one person, but they have to be able to. If you can set the link up, I can't believe somebody down there can't at least get us there.
Right.
If they can't, I'm really worried.
I would think Shannon could do that.
Yeah, I, I know that they've done it before. I don't, Dylan, didn't you go, attend a virtual DPW commission meeting before?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I remember sent, like, I've sent out.
It's obviously possible.
Yeah, I've sent it out detailed instructions.
Well, I, I think, I think given what's at stake, and.
Yeah, it's important.
It's important, it's important to Jason for sure. He knows most of the board personally, and I'm sure he'll get in contact with them and make sure we have a quarrel.
Yeah, we got to have a quarrel.
So we can take some action on it, and then you need the commissions to all agree to, to pony up their share, and that's, that's money we'll have to find. This, this is one of those things that's.
Well, if, well, the enterprise funds, they have a little more discretion there than, than.
And I'd rather come up with this than, than, you know, eighty thousand dollars on a rack, and there's each.
It's only fifty.
It's only fifty, so forty-eight thousand each. I'm saying I'd rather do this than buy a new one at a quarter million.
Oh, oh, oh.
Because then we're spending eighty thousand dollars a piece.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's, you know, and to see comparable trucks that have, you know, for more money with a quarter million mile or a half a million miles on them is just.
Well, they're probably not rusted out down in Decatur.
This is probably not rusted out either, actually, but it's, it's just the longevity of the vehicle. It really is, it's, it's proven through the posts you see, and, and other towns hold them for a long time. It'd be nice if we could move.
Well, one more meeting.
All right. Jessica, you have a report for us? Anything special?
Yeah, so actually Chief Dragowski let me know last week, sometime late last week, that the state completed their annual ambulance license inspection for the fire department, and that they passed with flying colors.
Imagine that.
For the first time ever, they had no discrepancies, and the department is licensed for another year to operate their ambulances.
Excellent.
Also, last week, I was notified that we were approved for an ADA grant from the office, the Massachusetts Office on Disability. So the town has been applying for this grant for a number of years in partnership with CMRPC, and this year, we finally got it. It's thirty-seven thousand dollars, but it's all, you know, we are going to contract with CMRPC, and they are going to help us through doing the evaluation and the transition plan for a number of our properties in any publicly accessible park, facility, et cetera. So that's pretty exciting for us because once we get this, this is kind of that, the key to allow us to apply for ADA grants that will let us implement issues, solutions to issues that we have, ADA issues that we have. So for example, like, the, the ramp at the old town hall needs to be adjusted. And that's what I've been told because it's apparently not ADA accessible, so, you know.
Bathroom signage, bathroom access, handicap stall access, bar heights.
Yeah, and today.
And it goes on.
Right.
I just did a lot of this forgotten a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and a lot of what I.
It's a big list.
I actually did today as a part of our open space and recreation plan is that I had to do a self-evaluation around all of the public parks in town, and so I was driving around the parks in town, and it was like.
Nice day for it.
There's, yeah. There was, there's basically like no ADA accessibility at any of our parks. So hopefully, you know, this can kind of get the ball rolling on, on helping our disabled residents and guests have access to other public facilities.
Excellent.
And then the, the last thing that I have for you guys is that a couple of months ago, a student. of a student who is pursuing an Eagle Scout project to clean up part of our common, he reached out to me, um, and he was wondering, you know, what types of flowers the board would like to see and what color mulch, um, that you guys would like to see, so... Any suggestions?
Last time we had an Eagle Scout in here, I had conversations with some people in the scouting, um, environment, and apparently, things were done out of order. Typically, um, an Eagle Scout program goes through their local chapter and up through this commission, and then comes to the town. So, I would be hesitant to, um, take much action or discussion until we get to that point.
Okay.
That it's gone through the proper channels, because, um, I, I don't want to, you know, give other scouts the idea that they can circumvent the rules and procedures that are set forward for the Eagle Scout. It's a very serious program.
Right.
And it comes with some very good accolades when, when they achieve that. So, just verify before we do something like that, um, where they're, where they're at.
Yes, and we'll definitely do that.
If that's okay, but...
Yes, yeah, fine.
And that is all I have tonight.
All right, Sandy, anything you want to say before the holidays?
No. I'm cold.
They're all cold.
Yes, it's cold in here.
Dylan probably is not. He looks toasty warm.
Yeah, it's cold in here, Dylan. You chose a good night to be virtual.
Cold. Um, I hope everyone has a fantastic Christmas and safe Christmas and New Years.
Same to you, Greg. Um, I would like to just say that I thought I was gonna be able to say I wasn't gonna see you until then, but I'll see you Thursday somehow.
We'll, we'll get there somehow and do that.
Yes, we will.
And then, um, our meeting for the...
It's on the fourth.
New Year on the fourth, thank you.
That, that calendar is, um, now out of date.
The fun one.
Yes.
And we're gonna meet on the Tuesday after?
The Tuesday after, which is...
I was gonna say, we should go for Tuesday, but...
January fourth.
So, that's our next meeting, it's not till January fourth, okay, other than Thursdays.
So, the next official, full meeting will be the fourth of January, on a Tuesday, for those who want to tune in. In that case, I'd look for the appropriate motion.
Uh, move we adjourn the meeting?
Second to motion.
Motion, second to adjourn. Any further discussion?
It's cold in here.
Here and now, I'll call for vote, other than that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.